Naffers, ready when you are.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento Housing Authority, City Council shall come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. If everyone who can please stand, let's do so and ask Councilmember Gata to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and just as for all.
Okay. Again, good afternoon to everyone. We've got, I think, a relatively short agenda here today for the Housing Authority. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Is there any question about the MOU under item one?
I'll move consent.
Seconded. I'm sorry, moved and seconded. Is there any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay, let's call the roll then, please.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Ashby is absent today.
Yes, yes. Okay, that measure passes eight to nothing. Let's now go to the discussion calendar. Items two and three, I think we can take together, can we not? Ms. Dozier, why don't we do that for discussion purposes even if we have to take them separately as a vote?
Okay, that sounds great. So first, we'll start with a summary report on Capital Park Hotel. As you know, over a year ago, we moved forward pretty quickly and aggressively to use that as a shelter. So we wanted to report out on the outcomes of the shelter. And I have with me Mary Liz Paulson, who is our Assistant Director of Her Homeless Innovation, and she's going to give the report.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. As LaShell said, my name is Mary Liz Paulson, and I'm S.H.R.A.'s Assistant Director of the Homeless Innovations Department. I am happy to be here to tell you about the Capital Park Temporary Shelter. Tonight, we are closing one chapter of its life and beginning the next. Today, I will introduce you to Capital Park Temporary Shelter that has long-term residents and homeless shelter guests. I want to show you what we learned about the 428 guests that stayed at Capital Park Hotel over the past 13 months it was open, and I want you to hear some of the stories about how the shelter impacted them. Capital Park Hotel was built in 1912 and was operating as a 180-unit, single-room occupancy residential hotel located in downtown Sacramento until it was sold to Mercy Housing in July of 2019. At that time, Capital Park Hotel was at about 50% occupancy. Mostly long-term residents were living in about 80 of the 180 rooms. Mercy Housing planned to apply for tax credit funding, and the city recognized the opportunity to utilize Capital Park Hotel's vacant rooms as a temporary shelter for the many unsheltered individuals sleeping on the streets of downtown. This signaled the beginning of a new partnership. The city of Sacramento leased Capital Park Hotel from Mercy Housing and asked S.H.R.A. to oversee the Capital Park Temporary Shelter. The city provided $9.6 million to modify the space and oversee the shelter. S.H.R.A. contracted with Jon Stewart Company to collect the rents from the long-term residents and the six commercial businesses located there on site and manage the property. S.H.R.A. also contracted with Sacramento Steps Forward to manage the front door to the shelter by receiving referrals from the Impact Team, the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, and the Downtown Navigators. Then S.H.R.A. contracted with Volunteers of America to oversee the daily operations of the shelter. S.H.R.A. did some minor modifications to the building to create a secure entry to the building with an office to check in homeless guests and the long-term residents who lived there as they came and went. This picture shows the renovation of the hotel office. While there, Jon Stewart Company oversaw repairs to the heating system and the water tanks on the roof used for air conditioning. They worked hard to keep the one elevator in operation. There were plumbing issues as the pipes were original cast iron. This picture shows the buildup of sediment that kept the fresh water from flowing throughout the building. One of the guests, Kenneth, when questioned about his time at the shelter, said that even though the building was 100 years old and everything in it was 100 years old, quote, "It kept me out of the cold," and that was the goal, to provide shelter to the homeless living on the street. Guests understood the constraints of the building. They appreciated having a safe place to stay at night. The intent of Capital Park Hotel was to provide shelter for the homeless person sleeping in the downtown or midtown area. At intake, all of the guests were asked where they slept the night before. All but three of the 428 guests came from the area shown on this map. The Downtown Sacramento Partnership reported a noticeable reduction in the number of people sleeping outside, and this was reflected in their quarterly census after Capital Park Hotel Temporary Shelter opened. The Downtown Library also reported that the people they interacted with had moved into the shelter. I think we achieved this goal. During the intake process, we asked the guests how they had become homeless, and this chart shows their answers. We also asked how long they had been living on the streets so that we could determine if they were chronically homeless or episodically homeless. I've defined chronically homeless, a chronically homeless individual, to mean a homeless who is a homeless person who is disabled, who has been unsheltered for at least 12 months or on at least four separate occasions in the last three years where the total time homeless is at least 12 months. These are the folks who are the hardest to serve. It is not surprising to see that more folks who reported being chronically homeless said that they became homeless due to issues that are typically long-term: drug and alcohol addiction, mental health issues, and chronic medical problems. This chart shows how many guests were admitted to Capital Park Hotel monthly. You can see that initially, we were adding guests as the hotel opened. After this, we admitted guests only as beds became available. Now you can see the guests that were staying in the shelter nightly, the total number each night. We achieved a maximum occupancy of about 115. This is as many guests plus the residents that the hotel could support. We continued to maintain about 115 guests nightly until COVID hit in mid-March. Then we stopped adding guests while we transitioned from two persons per room to one person per room to allow for social distancing. As more of the long-term residents relocated, they freed up additional rooms for additional shelter guests. Here you can see some basic demographics. Two-thirds of the guests were male, mostly white. The oldest guest was 78, and about 13% were young people aged 18 to 24. Consistently, about 80% of the guests self-reported that they were disabled. About 50% reported that they had a mental health disability. About 50% reported they had a substance abuse problem. Both of these conditions were thought to be underreported. This report shows how long guests stayed at the hotel, broken into two groups: those that moved to permanent housing and those that didn't. It is interesting to see the sweet spot for those that moved to permanent housing was about two to four months. We know that many of the folks who stayed past eight months needed more services and support than was available in the community. This highlights the need for permanent housing. Let's talk about rehousing. 428 guests were sheltered at Capital Park Hotel in 13 months. 165 of them did not return to the streets. 16 moved into temporary housing in clean and sober environments, transitional housing, or with friends and family. 149 moved into permanent housing. For the 149 that moved into permanent housing, we paid six months of rental assistance while working with them to develop an income stream, typically Social Security disability or employment. We have found that it is the staffing support before and after relocating that is so important. Support after rehousing is critical to help with individuals feeling like they are remaining connected to others, not isolated and alone. And also, the rehousing staff has been very involved in helping negotiate and advocate for the guests with the landlords. Kevin was one of our guests, and he was interviewed and talked about his time being homeless. He said he was doing well until he was having real difficulties in 2016 and '17 and found himself homeless. He was working with VOA staff to become rehoused. He set a goal to be rehoused by his birthday, July 14, and found housing just a few days later. He is living in shared housing now, and you can hear the pride in his voice when he talks about taking good care of his new home and making sure to water the yard daily. Capital Park Hotel Temporary Shelter changed lives and lives of the next generation. I am so pleased to tell you that two families were reunited with their children. The children were with CPS, and they have been returned. Two additional families are very close to reunification for various reasons, some outside of our control. We can't help everyone, but for some of the guests, including these families, their lives will be changed forever. People become homeless through different routes. Here are two stories from two different women. Abigail here became homeless at the age of 17, when she was struggling with some mental health issues and moved out on her own. She stayed with families where she proudly says she graduated from high school. Her fam- then moved in with family who kicked her out when she turned 18. She eventually moved into Capital Park Hotel Temporary Shelter. Her caseworker signed her up to attend a job fair, which led to employment, and she's still employed as a registered behavioral technician. She is currently housed, and with regular employment, she's on her way to becoming stable. This is Jenny. Jenny tells her story of being married and having a nice income, a nice home, and seven kids. When her husband died, she found herself homeless and has been homeless for almost 24 years. She is now rehoused in shared housing and is doing well. So how much does all of this cost? Well, the expenses are still coming in as we're still closing out the utility bills, so we don't have the final cost yet. But as of September 30, we can look at these costs. So S.H.R.A. provided staffing and oversight. We have one staff person located at the shelter full-time, working as a team member with Volunteers of America and Jon Stewart Company on site. The property repairs are those that were initially needed to convert the hotel to a shelter, including the modifications to the entrance shown in the pictures earlier and the installation of security cameras throughout the hotel. Property management costs were paid to Jon Stewart Company to manage the long-term residents and the businesses located at Capital Park Hotel. And shelter operations covered Sacramento Steps Forward's role in receiving referrals and coordinating intake. The VOA staffing at the site, which operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, the three meals a day for each of the guests, the rehousing, as we've discussed, and the facility maintenance to manage the building and keep the shelter operational.
Sorry, could I ask a just clarifying question on that, if you go back?
Sure.
What was the time period on that?
This is for the quarter, the quarterly report ending September 30, so it was a year.
A year, okay. And is it possible to break out the staffing and oversight costs?
Yes. In fact, there will be a written report that will follow this, and that will break out more of the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So during this process, we, S.H.R.A., learned a lot, and here are some of the best practices, many of which we are replicating in our other shelters. So we found that it is good to have an S.H.R.A. presence on site. There is so much happening all the time, and it's hard to communicate all of it. Being on site is important to see what's happening in real time and to be part of the developing team that's working together for the shared goal. Having a separate entity focusing on outreach keeps the provider focused on serving folks on site, and this proved worthwhile. Collecting data in real time is key to telling our story and tracking what works. Being engaged with the guests and hearing their perspective throughout their stay is important, not just at the end, but throughout. And communication, both formally and informally, between all the partner agencies is key. We're always creating new tools to communicate better. We count on our partners. So this doesn't happen in a vacuum. Special thanks to all the people that made this work, especially in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. I think our unsung heroes are the folks at the shelter who keep things going in the midst of the pandemic with all sorts of challenges. This completes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Oh. Thank you very, very much. A lot of thank yous to go around, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait. Is there public testimony on this item?
I have no callers on item two or three.
Okay, for two and three, let's turn it over to Councilmember Hanson, and I guess I will do my first thank you. And that is to thank Councilmember Hanson for stepping up and saying yes right away after I made that challenge, 100 beds per times eight. This is really, was an important, important step, and I thank you, Steve. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. I know that we talked about doing the presentations together. Did you want to do the other presentation real quick before we go through this, or I'm happy to give comments on this?
Why don't we do the second presentation? That's what I thought I had asked.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, we'll have, oh, that's okay. So the second presentation is really having Christine come forward and talk about the financing for the next phase of Capital Park.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm just gonna, I'm not sure if I'm on, there we go. Yes, Christine Weicher from S.H.R.A. The report before you, a request approval of loans and final documents for the Capital Park Hotel. In the summer of 2019, the project was awarded State No Place Like Home Funds, 134 project-based vouchers to house homeless households, and S.H.R.A. loaned Mercy Housing funds for the acquisition of the building and relocation of the 80 residents. In February 2020, council approved $9.9 million in financing to Mercy Housing for the rehabilitation of the 180 SRO units into 134 affordable units with bathrooms and kitchens. Between March and August of this year, the final structural, electrical, and state historic preservation officers' investigations were complete. Those resulted in increased project scope of work, including adding reinforced concrete frames and structural steel and reinforcing exterior brick, interior floors, and the stairwells. In addition, a new transformer and additional electrical systems were needed. In August, developers submitted requests for funding to S.H.R.A. for an additional $4.2 million to finance the increased scope of development. S.H.R.A.'s construction staff reviewed and approved the additional construction budget. Financing from S.H.R.A. will include an aggregated loan of $13.3 million. Other financing includes federal, state, and historic tax credits, an H.P. loan, and fee waivers. Given Mercy's experience with other homeless permanent supportive housing, they are proven they're qualified to take on the development and the management of Capital Park, and we anticipate the project to begin construction in December. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the loan and final documents, and staff's available to answer any questions you may have. I'd also like to thank Ann Nichols of our staff, who worked very hard on this throughout the years. So as long as she couldn't be here today, I'd want to thank her.
Okay.
Answer any questions.
Okay, very good. So now we've had both presentations, and I assume no public testimony on this item as well. Madam Clerk, let's then turn it back to Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. It's rare, over the course of a career, we get to see the kind of transformation that this particular site is going to go through. Martin Luther King said, "The moral arc of the universe is long, but it bends towards justice." These sites, this particular site, which was a SRO that was protected under a 2007 ordinance, when we had the chance to see it preserved as a historic building and saved through a long-term conversion to permanent supportive housing, we jumped at helping one of our best affordable housing partners, Mercy Housing, do that. They proved with the project at Seventh and H, just a few blocks from where I live, what kind of quality work they do, how they support their residents in the long-term outcomes. And, you know, Mayor, when you challenged us to do the 100 beds, this site had just come up, and we had to front-load some of the money. We had to make it work. And what we learned as S.H.R.A., and thank you, LaShell, Christine, the whole team, this was the proverbial money pit from the time we got it. Unfortunately, the SRO ordinance hadn't uncovered some of the systemic system failures that we inherited when we bought the building. So a lot of the work we had to do, and the residents themselves never complained because they were threatened with eviction, should they complain. In the meantime, we passed a rent control law that protected the rights of tenants in these situations. And I think what has happened here in the end is not only did many people get sheltered, and if you've been at Chauvin's Plaza lately or have looked at some of the conditions because of the pandemic, we need these shelter beds. We need these permanent supportive housing beds. And S.H.R.A., and I really appreciate the presentation on the shelter, it was painful, but we did a lot of good. And, you know, if government were only the easy things, I think it would be a very different world and it'd probably be less challenging, maybe less rewarding. But this project was both challenging, and I think in the end is extremely rewarding. The historic preservation cost to do it, you know, there have been people who argue we need more affordable housing, more permanent supportive housing for the formerly homeless, but then they say we shouldn't do it because it's too expensive, and we can't have it both ways. I really applaud the council for staying strong and driving this change, using state and federal resources, tax credits, other programs, or all local resources to piece these things together. The alternative would have been a historic building that needed seismic retrofit, complete transformation, that would likely have never been a viable private sector project. The building would have declined dramatically and probably would have been ultimately condemned or something else would have happened that would have meant we would have lost a valuable historic resource. I'm very grateful to our team for working through this with Mercy, to Mercy Housing themselves for sticking with a very complicated project. And, you know, it's only a few blocks from City Hall, but it's not very far from the state Capitol. And, well, I know our legislators aren't the lazy type. There are many who will look out their window and wonder what they should work on with the legislation, what things should happen. And after some of those reports that I think were very misleading came out in the news about the cost and success of the shelter, we were contacted by Assembly members from Southern California who wanted to use our pursuit of transformation at this site as an example of the failure of state programs. And I think this site in the end, and this is that arc, not only does it bend towards justice to create housing, to get people experiencing chronic homelessness into stable conditions, but it shows the long and deep and hard work necessary to create real change. And so I'm very pleased at the staff and all the work here who made this possible. It's not something that we would ask to do every day, certainly easier to build ground up, but I'm pleased to make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation for the funding and that we accept the report on the success of the shelter program. So, and Mayor, you deserve a lot of credit for being fearless in the face of a lot of questions and hand-wringing and everything else. And, you know, you gave us the space to do something really great here, and that's not something that happens on every project.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much again for stepping up.
Okay.
But there's a second. Vice Mayor Harris has a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the comments of Councilmember Hanson. You know, this building is iconic. It's a real piece in the fabric of Sacramento's structures. It's very difficult and very costly to save an old building like this. And for the people who marvel at the cost per unit, they have to understand that bringing an historic structure into seismic condition to withstand earthquakes, to bring up the electrical system, to rehab a building like this is tremendously costly. It would frankly be much cheaper to tear it down and build new. There's no doubt about it, but it is an historic preservation structure. It's more or less a protected structure, but it's also very important, I think, overall to Sacramento. To use it for sustained housing for the homeless and people of very low income is a great use. So that's the financial piece. I have a couple of thank yous I'd like to put out there. First, certainly S.H.R.A. for taking on the project and, you know, for meeting with the mayor and I originally to look at all of the hotels and motels in Sacramento to think about a way forward to use these facilities for homeless housing. But more, most importantly, I want to thank Volunteers of America. They did an admirable job, a very difficult and delicate and important job in managing the shelter. It's extremely hard work, and I think they deserve huge kudos for what they achieved at Capital Park Hotel. Additionally, I want to thank Mercy Housing. And I saw Rich Sarallo, I saw his picture on the roster here. Rich is a friend of mine, and, you know, he's worked with Mercy Housing for a long time. If he has his hand in this project, I would expect success, as we had at Seventh and H with Rich. You know, that again is not easy work. They are taking on a project that is going to be fraught with difficulties. There's no doubt about it. Rehabbing this building is risky, frankly. It's risky for Mercy, but they have the might and the expertise to pull it off. So I expect that it will go well. I think that we will look forward to housing 134 or more individuals in our homeless community. And, you know, I found at the railroad shelter that you can have successes with the homeless. People kind of despair sometimes. We actually house a lot of homeless individuals. People lose sight of that, you know. They see what they see on the streets, and it's difficult to look at. It's difficult to watch. But we do have a lot of success in taking people in very desperate conditions with a lot of pre-existing conditions, you know, mental infirmities, physical infirmities, financial disposition that's kind of dire. We have done well overall in dealing with people with these kinds of conditions. It's really a matter of getting them to the point where they can see a better future for themselves. But this work is important, and it's moving forward. And had Eric not seconded, I would, but this project should move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Just my thank yous here. I already thanked Councilmember Hanson, but S.H.R.A., thank you. You know, you actually, the agency, you know, took some criticism here for the condition of the hotel. And I thought that was unfair because the hotel was in the shape it was in when you, in fact, gained possession of it. And you took our direction to bring people indoors, out of the cold, out of the elements, even if the hotel was not. even if the hotel was not in good condition, because you recognize what I think is one of the most important lessons of the Capital Park experience. And that is, when it comes to homelessness, we have got to do everything we can to bring people under a roof, even if it is imperfect. Because everything we do must be compared to the status quo, which is horrendous and unacceptable. And you took that flak without flinching, and I really appreciate it. And then you have worked, of course, with your partners, with VOA, of course, who did a tremendous job, as they always do, thank you. And now Mercy Housing to transform this into permanent supportive housing for, I hope, many of the same people, but certainly the same cohort of people with similar challenges. And I take a special point of pride in the fact that the permanent housing is in part funded by the No Place Like Home Act, which I invented and came up with out of the Mental Health Services Act and Proposition sixty-three. But if we apply this kind of urgency and attitude to not let all the reasons not to do something win over a reason to do something, if we do what we did with Capital Park in other parts of the city, we will make more dramatic progress. And so for everybody involved, I say thank you. Four hundred twenty unduplicated people sheltered and a hundred and sixty-five people now not returned to the streets. I know that may, we want higher numbers, but that still is almost forty percent real human beings, and some relief as well for businesses and the residences affected by this very difficult social condition. So I think it's a good win. Let's learn the positive lessons here, and let's do more of it. Thank you. Motion, is there a motion, there was a motion and a second on both items or on just the first item?
Mayor, the first item was a receivable file, so.
Okay, so on item, on the second item, it's been moved and seconded, let's call the roll?
Item number three, Councilmember Ashby is absent. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye.
Mayor, I see Stephen Dawes from Mercy is here. Stephen, thank you to your whole team for taking this complicated but important project on.
Thank you, Steve. Congratulations, Steve. Appreciate you bringing up Seventh and H, which I know you helped us celebrate the groundbreaking at the beginning of your career and I think this is just an incredible accomplishment. Thank you and SHRA for the partnership.
Thank you, Stephen. Keep working with you. You know how to get it done. All right, members, that is the formal agenda. Are there, is there public testimony on items not on the formal agenda, Madam Clerk?
There are no callers for public comments matters not on the agenda.
Okay, are there council ideas and questions? The only thing I want to say unrelated to this agenda, but I just, for anybody watching, we do intend to continue the Gateway West Commercial Project at five o'clock tonight, for anybody watching. And we'll do that, of course, formally through a council vote when we adjourn at five. But we do not, we plan to continue that item tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so probably for the city manager. Had a good Law and Legislation Committee discussion today. One of the items that came up were the potential of greater fines in a specific area around fireworks or illegal fireworks. But I know that, and I've been participating in an initiative that the city is involved with, which is a national initiative on fines and fees run by Policy Link out of Oakland. There are, I believe, ten cities in the country that were selected to work on this. I think as we move into both mid-year and our budget season, it would be great to get a presentation by Amy Williamson, as a person who's leading the effort for the city. You know, we far too often, I think, react to increased fines as a mode of enforcement, and it may or may not work, and it is certainly not an equitable situation on who those fines and fees generally come down on. So my request for the city manager and under Mike Jasso is that we get a we get a presentation on that sooner rather than later.
Mayor, I have a comment as well, but I don't know if Howard is here, but it's related to city, but it might also involve the housing authority.
Go ahead.
So I do see that Daniel Foster and some of the other senior staff are here. We've been working with several projects that, because of the COVID pandemic and other complications from the economic fallout, they were close to being financed to go into construction, but the financing fell through. And on a couple of them, their building permits are set to expire at the end of the year. Generally, the city doesn't extend building permits, or we haven't had a history of that. So what I would like, and we're trying to work creatively through this challenge, but I would like the city attorney and the city manager to see if, under their authority and LaShelle, if you can help with your expertise, if there's a way to help extend these building permits that if they're not pulled by the end of the year and represent a very significant investment, would expire and have to be resubmitted under a new building code, which has tremendous cost with it. If we can, because of the pandemic, like we did on tolling of entitlements, also extend building permits for twelve months that are otherwise likely to expire by the end of this calendar year. That's the request and city manager, city attorney, whoever is relevant. If they can use their own authority, that's very helpful, but if they want to bring an item back for council, that also would be helpful to give some relief. Unfortunately, because the end of the year is approaching very quickly, it would have to come back to council prior to twelve thirty-one to give those people with building permits that would be subject to a new building code that takes effect on January first. Some indication of pandemic relief for that twelve-month period I requested.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure that the city manager gets that request. I know you and I talked about this earlier today, Councilmember Hanson, on follow-up as well, so thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will convene as a city council at five o'clock. And in the meantime, the meeting of the housing authority is adjourned. Thank you so much.